Okay, good evening, parents. I'm gonna get started and I guess people will start joining in as we move along. Let me just, okay. So, welcome to our Wednesday night Town Hall meeting. I'm Valerie Apohehman with Advocates for Angels. And tonight, I want to talk about, I've been talking a little bit about parents' emotions and the high-stress anxiety and overwhelm that parents are under right now. Just, you know, things are coming to a peak with the election. We're all very, you know, concerned about the the COVID-19. Where in California, we're still pretty much in lockdown across the nation. It's a little different in every state. And then we have on top of that are kiddos who are either experiencing virtual schooling, remote schooling, a hybrid model where they've gone back to school part-time. Some states and some districts have gone back into school depending on their local health agency. And so some kids are transitioning back into the school site on a full-time basis. So we're all over the place. And, and this has also caused kids to be extremely escalated in their behaviors because when kids transition, every time we have our children transition, it causes escalation of their behaviors because our kids don't transition well. They don't like change. They don't like their schedules disrupted. So we turn the world upside down by having teaching in the home. They had a transition into just learning how to do that. And they're just now kind of getting used to it. And now schools are starting to slowly open up and either go offer a hybrid model or they're opening schools up. Not quite yet in California. It depends on what district you're in across the state. But we're, we're still just starting to barely open with some cohorts. And, and but the schools are preparing to open to offer a hybrid model. So that's where we're at. And that transition is going to be extremely difficult for our kiddos. Because as I said, they just got used to home. Now they're gonna have to get used to going back to school. Another transition. So all of that has caused us as families to be highly charged and overwhelmed. So in that, I want to talk about overall advocacy because I think it's a good topic to open up just to talk to parents about advocacy in general and becoming a parent advocate so that you can protect and defend the rights of your child. As I've been saying, and for many of you that have been following for any amount of time, I'm a huge advocate to teaching parents how to empower themselves to be able to advocate for themselves and protect their rights of their child without having to hire an attorney or an advocate. But in order to get to that place where you can be a successful parent advocate on your own without hiring someone to represent you, it takes time. It takes effort. It takes study. It takes work. And it also takes some kind of a financial investment. Because in order for you to learn that, you're gonna have to be coached or have to have a mentor to teach you the steps along the way. And I've also talked about the fact that there's not very many advocates that do that. I'm one of the very few. I know of a couple other ones across the nation, not many. I know that my programs are the lowest fees of those, of those other advocates because, and the reason I'm doing that, which is my parent brigade, is because of the situation we're in now. And I wanted to open up assistance and support for parents who can't afford to hire an advocate. So now let's talk about if you can hire an advocate. So if you can hire an advocate, which is great, which is also an option. I also always want to impress upon all my clients that hire me that sure, I can come in and fix everything for you and speak on your behalf and get everything done. But if those parents that do hire an advocate or attorney don't learn their parent rights and what to do after the attorney or the advocate is gone and you're all alone again at your IEP meeting. If you don't know how to continue to sustain those services and that IEP that the advocate or attorney gained for you, you're gonna go right back to them taking it away, them misleading you, them misguiding you, and them violating your parent rights. So, you know, a lot of parents, you know, they, they still are just not clear on, you know, the reasons why the district does this and why the district doesn't just give our kids what they need and help our kids. I mean, we have special needs children. How could they be so cruel and how could they be so heartless to make parents fight for services and fight to get the education their child needs because we already have a special needs child? How could that be possible? And the reason it's possible, and this is true across the entire nation, is because the school district is a government agency, which is a bureaucratic institution. And bureaucratic government agencies have hierarchies of power and control. And, and a political agendas cause them to only be focused on the funding, the money, to have the power and control over the money, to, to be the gatekeepers of that funding. And so their first response is going to be no. They always say no. That is the formality that they're going to give you is no. And they might give you no, 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 five noes. But if you know how to go through the appeal process and you know what to do after you get the no, you will eventually get to the yes, because I always get to the yes. I, I don't even listen to them when they say no. I go, oh, we got another prior written notice that says no. Okay, this is the next step we do now. And we just keep going through the steps by seven steps that I teach in the parent brigade. And eventually you will get to the yes. I, I think I've mentioned a couple of times too that we've had great success with several, not several, probably about six or seven of my brigade members in which they have gained compensatory education from March, April, May, and June. One of my other brigade members has also gained a non-public school, which is somewhere around $50,000 a year. But then when you add on top of that transportation and you add on top of that speech and language services, that's gonna take it up another about $15,000, $20,000 for those things. So these are high-ticket programs that, you know, when you go to a non-public school, it's very, very expensive. And the school district is funding that for this one parent because she went through all my seven steps, which includes the letter of dissent that, that she wrote after the IEP meeting, which is a partial agreement. And then she went through the informal dispute resolution meeting with her director. And then she developed a settlement agreement with the director, negotiated that settlement agreement. And she won the non-public agency enrollment and tuition along with transportation, along with speech and language services to be continued at that non-public agency. So, so IDEA parents, the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, the federal law. And then of course you have your state law, whatever that may be. So in California, it's the California Education Code. That gives us the power and authority over them. So they have the impression, and, and they come from a mentality and kind of a stance and position at your IEP meetings that they have all the power and authority. And we're just these little parent victims that, that have to sign the IEP and sign whatever they offer us. And, and because we don't know what to do. When in truth, we have the power and authority, parents, because we have the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act behind us, federal law, along with our state law. That gives us the sovereignty of us being in control. But you're not gonna step into that sovereignty of stepping out of the victimhood of not knowing how to protect your rights and step into sovereignty and authority until you learn how to do that, until you learn your parent rights, until you learn all the acronyms that special education comes with. I have a list of the acronyms. I think it's probably about, I don't know, 75 acronyms because they love using those acronyms. And if you don't know those acronyms and they're in meetings and that you know how they do their, their IEP talk, you know, PWNs, IEEs, NPAs, ABA, you know, on and on and on. If you don't know those acronyms, you're gonna be lost in those IEP meetings. And that's just one little tip of the iceberg is knowing the acronyms, understanding the language of the IEP, understanding the process of the IEP process. So let's talk about the IEP process. The IEP process is that it's, everything is based off of assessment. Assessment is the evidence that gets you the services, the goals and accommodations and placement that you need for your child. You cannot get what your child needs without a proper assessment. And you're not gonna get a proper assessment through your local school district. Because those assessments that they do are the minimal amount of testing that they could possibly get away with. And even the testing that they do do is going to be biased testing. Because they can submit a report that has low scores in it, that has, shows deficits, but they don't identify those deficits. They don't talk about those deficits. That they, you might get a score sheet that says all these deficit areas. And then the narrative that they write under it is, oh, he has strengths in this and he has strengths in that, and he can do this and he can do that. And they just skip over all the deficits. Why? Because if they identify and talk about the areas of need, they're going to have to write a goal for that area need, talk about services for that area of need, talk about how they're going to address that area of need. So of course, they don't want to identify all the areas of need. So they diminish it, they, they dilute it and water it down so that they don't have to talk about it. And then when parents don't know how to read the test scores, you don't know how to read the assessments and understand what the assessments say, you're gonna be lost. You're not gonna have the argument or understand even what it says. So you can go in and say, okay, look at all these deficit scores. My child needs services and speech and language. What do you mean? You're only gonna give me 20 minutes once a week? That's certainly not enough for, for what this assessment says. How will you ever say that if you don't know how to read an assessment? You don't know, understand what the bell curve is, you don't understand the standardized test scores and what they mean. So these are some of the other things in the IEP process that of course I teach and coach parents how to understand, educate themselves on that so they can advocate for themselves at IEP needs. Now, along in that IEP process that I was talking about, so the first thing I always do when I take a case, and this is the same thing attorneys will do. They'll come in, they'll look at the, the assessments that were already, that were already conducted. So the, and which is what I do as well. So I look at the old assessments and then I will determine, okay, are those valid assessments? And if they're district assessments, most likely not. And so immediately I will ask for an IEE, an independent educational evaluation, which is a private evaluation from a service provider that is not a district staff member. And we get an IEE, which is going to provide you with the true and accurate and complete information about your child. What it's also gonna do is it's going to rule out anything that you might suspect that your child may have. So it's like a second opinion, like when you go to the doctor. You don't just believe if you're, you know, you're sick or you, you've got something really wrong. You don't just go to one doctor and he says, oh, you have to have surgery. You go to a second opinion. Maybe you even go to a third opinion before you make an informed decision about what you're going to do. Well, our kids are the same. This is an educational plan, just as if you would get a medical plan from a doctor. You're going to make sure that the decisions you make about your health are the right decisions. It's the same way with our kids' education. We have to make sure that the decisions we are making and the agreements we are making with our local school district are the right, appropriate, and correct decisions. That we're not agreeing to something that isn't the best thing for our child. Or that they didn't overlook or purposely overlook something that your child really needs. And that's what they do. They purposely overlook what your child really needs because they don't want to pay for it. Because the teachers don't want to do that much work. They don't want to add more goals. They don't want to add more accommodations. And the district doesn't want to pay for more services. And that's the bottom line. And that's the truth of the matter. Because we work for, we, we are under the bureaucracy of the government system, the school district. So again, back to the IEP process. So you're going to get all of the assessments, the IEEs that you need. And that could be in many different areas. And that's another thing that parents have no clue. All the areas to even ask for. So there's so many other areas other than just psychoeducational, speech and language, and occupational therapy that your child might have deficits in. So that, that's another area of education that parents need to learn. What kind of assessments to ask for? What are the timelines in, in, that the school district must abide by for you to receive that assessment findings and hold an IEP meeting? Because otherwise, they're going to delay you. They're going to, many times, parents come to me and say, I asked for a speech and language assessment six months ago and I haven't heard a word. So it's, it's the process, it's the timelines, it's getting things done in a reasonable and timely manner according to your state timelines for an assessment. Also, it depends also on your rights and who you're going to pick for your IEE, which is also very important. Because if you pick an IEE provider that is in the district's pocket and only wants to keep their contract going with the school district, you're gonna end up getting a report that looks just like the district report that you previously had. And then you're gonna waste your IEE because you can't ask for another IEE again until the district does their own IEE again. So every time a district does an assessment, you can ask for an IEE. Then it's the district gets to do an assessment again. Then you get to ask for an IEE. And that's how it goes. And you can't do that. You have to wait a year until you could ask for another assessment. Once an assessment is completed, you have to wait a year. So, so, so it's very important to make sure that that IEE is done by a reputable service provider that is not in cahoots with your local school district and someone who has been doing it for a very long time and someone who is also an advocate for kids and for parents and is gonna help you at your IEP meeting to implement their, their recommendations. Now, when you go to your IEP meeting with your IEE results, with your IEE service provider, the person who conducted that assessment, it is not that a person's job, whether it be a psychologist, a neurologist, a speech and language pathologist, if they're an occupational therapist. It's not their job to advocate for you. It's not their job to say, school district, you have to increase this child's occupational therapy to two hours a week in a clinic setting and with, with a reevaluation in a year. That's not their job. It's your job to do that. And parents usually don't know how to do that unless they learn, unless they're coached, unless they understand how to do that and how the school district works. And you can't do that if you don't understand what the report says, if you don't understand what the, what the scores are, and if you don't understand the questions to ask your evaluator and how to advocate to have the program specialist write the information down in your report and how to show evidence that they must provide that because here's the evidence, here's your child's needs. And if they don't want to give you that answer at the IEP meeting, how to hold them accountable to writing it in the IEP that you're gonna get a prior written notice or you know how to, if they say, no, we're not gonna do that. Here's our offer. We're gonna give you 30 minutes a week of OT. We're not gonna give you two hours. And we're not gonna give you an outside private provider. Then you, if you don't know the step to take, the appeal process to argue their denial, then you're gonna be stuck again. So there's lots of sticking points that you'll come across along the way. If you don't know again, stand in your sovereignty and your authority on IDEA and your parent rights, which are all of these appeal processes, the IEP process, the, the rights that are given to you under the law that you can implement as a parent of a child in an IEP. So then that IEP process, if you are successful in that IEP meeting or you go through the steps of the appeal process, and that is how you win the services, the goals, the accommodations, and the placement, if you're fighting for placement for your child. So, and there's of course lots of information that is included in that process. But in a nutshell, that's the IEP process. Now, the other thing is that IEP process, it can take up to a whole school year to go through that process. And why? Because every time you do an assessment, you're going to uncover something else that you need to assess. So I had a, just a year ago, a kiddo who was on the spectrum, he was in high school. When he, when the parents came to me, he had nothing on his IEP, nothing. And we went through the process. It took us over a year to go through the assessment process. And that's because he had nothing. So we had to start with the psychoeducational assessment, which uncovered, and, and speech and OT. Because that, those are the first three things that we always ask for, and that's not a problem getting. But then, when you get your psych, your OT and your speech assessment, that's when things start being uncovered. The speech pathologist might say, I see an auditory processing deficit here. You need to ask for an auditory process assessment. This, the psychology assessment might say, I see a vision processing deficits here. There's some low vision scores. You need to ask for a vision assessment. So then you have to ask for a vision assessment. And depending on when these assessments come in, it can be, you know, three months down the road, six months down the road, nine months down the road. And so it's like opening up the onion, peeling the onion until you get down to, okay, we've assessed in all areas of the child's suspected disability. We've ruled out everything. We know the deficits of this child, the needs of this child, and the strengths of this child. And that's when you know you, you've completely completed the IEP process. And with every child, it's different. Every individual child is, has different needs, has different areas of deficits and has a, a different IEP program, as, as we all know. Every kid on the spectrum is different, so different. Every child, doesn't matter what their disability is, what their eligibility is, every kiddo is different. The other caveat is, is that you don't know how your school district is going to respond to your case. Sometimes on a case, it'll go smooth as silk and they'll, we'll just move through the IEP process. And it's, which also, of course, then it doesn't take as long. Because I don't have to go write a partial agreement, ask for an informal dispute resolution meeting and go through the appeal process every time. Because they might just say, okay, we're gonna agree. We will increase the speech and language services. Okay, we're gonna agree. We're going to agree to that placement. If, when every time they deny you, you have to go through your seven steps of the IEP brigade, which is in my parent brigade, that I teach parents how to go through the, through the appeal process. Every time they disagree with you, you've gotta go through that appeal process. So as you can see, every case is different. There's no way to predict how long it's going to take to move through the IEP process for your child. Because it's like, you can't read the future. You can't foresee the future. And so, so you, you don't know. You just have to go through the process and do it. And when you finally get to the end of that road, then after that, it's maintaining the IEP that you developed and that you went through that long, hard road to get to, to, to make sure your child was assessed in all areas of the suspected disability and you've gained the supports and services and placement that your child needs. So, so those are, you know, the, the main foundational, in a nutshell, about parent advocacy and where you need to go and the education that you need to get to the, to get to the big yes to, to complete the process. So let's see. And I did want to tell you guys some, some numbers. So right now, autism is somewhere in the like mid to low 40s. One in every, last time I looked, it was 46. But I think it's even lower now. Because just remember this, parents, the CDC doesn't come out with their numbers two years late. So, so whatever number we're looking at today, say it's 145, that's from two years ago, from their data collection from two years ago. So you can bet that today, it's way lower than that. So the, you know, every year exponentially, our numbers grow in the children getting identified and diagnosed with autism. And that doesn't count all the kids that never are diagnosed, that go under the radar and that are on the spectrum but don't get identified. And then you have to also consider that kiddos ages three to 18 years old, four in 20 of those kids have one or more developmental or neurological disabilities. So that falls under the areas of ADHD, a learning disability, dyslexia, anxiety and emotional problems, social problems, communication problems, auditory processing, sensory integration, vision processing, all of those other kinds of issues that neurological disabilities entail. So we've got lots and lots of kiddos that have issues that, that have difficulty learning and that those disabilities impede them from their education, which is the criteria for an IEP. When a child's disability impedes them from accessing the general education curriculum, that is eligibility for an IEP, which most parents don't know either. So there's just a lot to, to be able to come out of that victimhood place of parents not knowing how to protect the rights of their child, being able to go into an IEP meeting, feeling authority and feeling sovereign, standing on IDEA and their state law and knowing how to be the coach of that IEP team, knowing how to hold your IEP team accountable to doing their job and doing it with integrity and fidelity. And, and again, I teach all of those skills in my course, my ultimate IEP course and in the parent brigade. And, and when parents hire me to be their advocate, I also require parents to continue on their education in learning how to be an advocate on their own. Because I'm not going to take cases and then leave that case and then have that mom be stuck in the wind, not knowing what to do after I leave. That, that's not what I want to do. I want that mom to, after I leave, be able to take over my position as an advocate and be her own advocate and be able to sustain what I gained for that family and for that child. Because it's not gonna do any good if you go hire an advocate or attorney and then, and then you don't know your rights and you don't know how to protect that IEP that the advocate attorney did for you. And it was a big waste of money and time. And then, and it's gonna be extremely upsetting when that happens after that person's gone and they take everything away and screw you all up again. Because you don't know how to protect that IEP. So, so that's, I think that was what I wanted to cover tonight, parents. So, does anybody have any questions? About any of that? How are you guys feeling about your advocacy levels?
Hi Valerie. No questions really here. We're still in the process We're still in the process of I E Es, I'm trying to figure out who um, you know, who can do our um. Psychoeducational, I'm trying to, I think, everything just takes time, time, you know, so.
Yeah.
Not an easy process, so we're still in the process, you know, baby steps.
Yes. But it does, it does take time, but um, but. It it shouldn't take more time than it should take. So, you know, w- we we have to remain within the timelines of of the state law. We can't do anything about those timelines, okay? So so when we ask for an assessment, they have to give it to us in uh, an assessment plan in fifteen days. And then they have to have an is uh IEP with the report in sixty days, if it's a district assessment. If it's an IEE, then the timelines go out the window. Because an IE provider doesn't work for the school district and they're not held accountable to staying within the timelines, they're a pr- private agency. So that's when it it again falls upon parents to make sure that, you know, if you don't. A- after you get your PWN approval, that you uh, they've they've awarded you an IEE. Then it's us pushing them to, you know, after that PWN, okay, has the contract been developed? You know, can I call my uh, to my provider and and schedule? Because th- there's a big gap in between the PWN time and scheduling. There's this big long gap of silence and that's where the delay comes in. And so, and many times it's them, it's them in the contract um process at the district office. It gets lost, it's sitting on someone's desk. Um, they they didn't call the service provider, even though the contract was developed. Or there's a contract glitch, there's always stuff that happens in that gap.
And you know what happened with us, um, I uh, trying to get ahold of our, you know, the provider that we chose for speech for the IEE. And yesterday, I finally got, I spoke to the director at the location and she said, you know, I think we're missing a contract, let me get back to you. So I reached, I reached out to our um program specialist at the district. I said, what's going on, you know, it's been weeks and weeks and I keep reaching out to them, something's missing. Well, what ends up happening, they call me, the district calls me back and they said, you know what? We thought they only did speech at that, at that location, but apparently they do other things. And we didn't specify in the contract what this IEE is for. So that's why they, the the location that we chose um, hasn't reached out to me to proceed. So she said, I'm so sorry, it was our fault, we didn't specify speech, so we're gonna get on top of it. So just like you said, like if I just sat back, you know, I was, nothing would have happened. So it looks like the district didn't specify it's for speech, because they assumed that location only did speech, but they, but they don't. They do ABA and I think they do.
Is this ha- um handy and temecula?
Um, um, looks, yes.
So, and when did you talk to them?
I spoke to them ju- just yesterday um at the office.
And you know what, Hala, that's misinformation.
But I spoke to the district today, the program specialist called me and she apologized, she's like, you know, we, I'm so sorry. It wa- it it didn't, we didn't specify on the contract, it was for speech and that's why.
Okay, so let me give you some inside information, Hala. I I I have two um, parents who have scheduled with them and the contract is done.
Oh, well, maybe because my contract didn't specify speech, you think, I don't know.
Maybe it was just your contract.
She's, because I had um different uh program specialists, because we switched schools. So when I initially asked for the IEE, it was with a different program specialist. And then we started at a different school this new year, the school year, and it's a new program specialist. So she's like, I had to go back and see what the other one did, she's like, and it seems like we didn't specify. And she promised me in in these day or two, it's gonna get taken care of, so. But yeah, I guess like you said, you know.
Programs, don't just say their first name, who's your program specialist now?
Uh, Danielle.
Oh yeah, okay, yeah.
But like you said, I mean, if you don't have the parent follow up and you don't, you don't, if you're gonna just sit back there, no one's gonna, the district's not gonna. Be like, oh, I'm so sorry, it's our fault, so.
Yeah, right, and so again, yeah, so there there can be delays, uh unnecessary delays. And and and, you know, if you didn't follow up, it would have just stayed delayed. Danielle wouldn't have followed up, that that the the agency's not gonna follow up, it would have just stayed with nothing happening.
Yeah.
So that's why, you know, when parents, you know, you know, don't know what to do. And what you should do is, you need to always be assertive, taking action steps, uh communicating. Following up, you know, checking on things, overseeing things. That's what, that's, you know, I, that's why I say, we are the coach of our team, we are overseeing the team. So you can't trust your program specialist to do it. You you can't trust the district to make sure that this is being done properly, because nobody's doing that. Nobody's overseeing, I can tell you that for sure.
Oh yeah.
That's why we have to be the ones to oversee, otherwise, it's not gonna happen.
So um, I had another quick question, I requested an FBA. Um, an Eske assessment for my son on the first of this month, okay? I haven't heard back and I think you told me, don't, didn't you say you, they have fifteen days to get back to us with an assessment plan?
Yes.
So it's been over fifteen days, um.
So they violated the fifteen day timeline. So now, um, you write an email to the um, program specialist. And you carbon copy the principal. Because the program specialist is the the overseer at the district office, the principal is the admin at the school side level. And you say, on this and such and such a date, I requested blah, 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 blah. Today is, whatever the date is, this is past the fifteen day timeline to receive an assessment plan. I look forward to receiving an assessment plan as soon as possible.
Okay.
And that's holding them accountable to the timeline and you letting them know, you know your rights. That there's a fifteen day timeline and they violated it. And you're holding them accountable to saying, I'm not gonna be delayed, I'm not gonna be, you know, taken advantage of. And I, and I'm holding you accountable, people, to remain within the timelines. That is a violation of California Ed Code.
Okay, okay, I'll do that.
And it's a big deal.
Yeah.
Even though they they don't, see, they don't think these little things like this, that they think are little things, they're not little things. If every single parent wrote a compliance complaint for a violation of timelines, which happens every day. Thousands of times a day they violate timelines, that district would get held accountable.
Oh.
Timeline violations to the state are a big deal.
I mean, yeah, because this is holding back also like getting res- like, you know, the right supports and resources for my child, everything now delayed, delayed, delayed. You know, so.
That's correct, that's correct, and that's how they delay.
Okay.
Because parents, most parents don't even know there's a fifteen day timeline, or even what an assessment plan is.
But once you sign that assessment plan, I, if I'm not mistaken, you mentioned they have sixty days. To, to give me a date to do the assessment or no? Because I signed the assessment plan for my other son, for the FBA.
No, 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 after you sign the assessment plan, within sixty days, they have to have conducted the assessment. And call an IEP meeting. On that sixtieth day after you sign that assessment plan, that's the, that's the deadline, that's the timeline, the sixtieth day. If they don't have an IP meeting and give you the report, they violated the timeline.
Okay, so I'll email regarding that as well, just to touch base and follow up, be like, I need to remind them.
Yeah, which is ridiculous.
Yeah, it's like they need, you know, but.
Yeah, and you could just, you could say something like, you know, I'd like to um, schedule the IP and count up with the sixty days. On your calendar and say, I wanna, I wanna calendar the IP by um, December twenty-eighth. Or whatever the sixty days would be, you know, before this date, which is the sixty day timeline for the assessment. That's how you say it. So you say it like that, so you, that you giving them the message, I know that the sixty day timeline is on this date. And I'd like to calendar IP before the sixty day timeline occurs, which is December twenty-eighth, or whatever it is.
And it's obviously um, uh, you don't count weekends as part of the sixty days, it's just the, like Monday through Friday, right?
It's calendar days.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, all right, guys, well, I guess tonight's short and sweet, um, I thi- I guess everybody's busy tonight, so. Um, if, and no one has any other questions.
I have a question, Valerie, um, this for Dora. Um, so Sharon finally replied, saying that I requested too many records already before that I should have it. I don't remember requesting the Q file, I I may have maybe and gave it to my old advocate, but. I don't remember getting any more than that one, then that was from his old school.
Yeah, but um, it doesn't matter what school they go to. And how many years ago was that?
That was just last year when he went, like he only went for six months.
Okay, well, that's why. That's what they're, they're only required to give a parent the records request. Um, you know, you'll, you, they gave it to you a year ago, so that's what they're saying. They're saying, we gave it to this mom a year ago, so we don't have to give it to you again. That's what she's saying.
Okay. All right, so then um. Shoulda, we just request for his old one then, or?
What do you mean his old one?
Like the old school file? Or like which file should, like the Q file you're asking for?
They're not gonna give us, they're not gonna give it to us, because they already gave it to you or to your advocate. Your advocate should have given it to you. Advocates don't keep Q files, it's your Q file, not theirs. I have a, all my clients' Q files in big white binders like this. And when I'm done with the case, I go, here mom, here's your Q file.
Okay, um, I think we could just, I could request for it again. Like I just put, ask for it to be put in a USB and I'll send it to you.
Requested by who?
Um, because she was saying that if you, if she want, if like I want it again, like she could charge me like five cents for every page.
Well, I think I, didn't you send me everything?
Yeah, but I thought you were asking for like, um. Like his, like work wise, like like homeworks and all those other stuff that he was doing in school.
They don't, they don't have homework in a Q file.
Ah, well then, I'm, she was probably talking about the wrong thing then, I'm probably talking about, yeah, the wrong one. So then, yeah, then you have everything then.
Yeah, a Q file is the records, the child's records, which are legal documents. So it's the IEP information, all the legal documents that pertain to your child's IEP case. So it would.
It doesn't do anything with the, like the classwork and anything like that.
Oh, no.
Okay.
It's that, they that, are you kidding, they they would have boxes and boxes.
Yes, that's why I'm like, uh, I could just put in all those in a USB, because like, that would be like hundreds of pages of classwork.
Well, I don't need his classwork, I don't need that, I, if I need.
Okay, okay, well then, yeah, so then.
Ask you for it if I need that. No, I, in order.
Okay, then, yeah, then you do have everything then.
All the legal documents, I need, I need the Q file, which are all the assessments, all the IPs. All the correspondence letters, all the notices, the, any, any hearing res- resolutions, settlement resolutions. Mediation resolutions, tho- that's the, that's the records Q file.
Okay, okay, well then, yeah, I sent you everything I have then.
Okay, that's all we need.
Good. Surprisingly, she replied to you, she never replied to the other, the letter that we sent her.
Yeah, well, that's because they're violating your parent rights.
Yeah, we still have to do her um, compliance complaint.
Yeah, but we don't do a complaint until we have the IEP and we make our requests. And then we see how they respond to those requests and then I look at where are the violations.
Oh, okay.
Yep, okay. Okay, you guys, um, thanks for attending tonight and you guys have a great week and I'll see you uh on Monday for my Facebook Live.
Thank you, Valerie.
All right, good night.